So I've got six o'clock, so let's start getting ready, folks. All right, that's six oh one. I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I don't see a preacher here. Okay. Do I have a volunteer from the council or the audience that would like to say grace? Or the invocation, what do you want to call it? It's open to anybody. Councilmember Lawson?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to live in such a great nation and be part of a great city as Saginaw. We honor you and may you be with us and touch each of us as we discuss the city's business and always have you on our minds. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson. Item three is the audit participation that's covered on the screen. If there is an item on the agenda you would like to speak, please see the city secretary. Unless it is a public hearing, which we have a couple tonight, if I call a public hearing, anyone can speak. I will call for open mic, basically, so please pay attention to that. Please silence your cell phones, devices, so we can have a nice meeting. I'd like to welcome folks watching online. I hope somebody's watching online, but if you have any feedback online about the audio visual quality, please hit us up. Item four is the consent agenda. It is lengthy, so I've had to request to pull items, let's see, I've got it written down, item I, M, and N. I, M, and N.
Could we, Mayor, could we add L to that as well?
L?
L.
Okay, so, so I, then L, M, N. Pull those. So, we will go the others. A, action regarding minutes of October 18th. B, action regarding an local agreement with Tarrant County for mill and asphalt overlay of Knowles. C, action regarding authorization of funding an oak agreement with Knowles Phase One. D, action regarding purchase of backhoe for Public Works. E, action regarding purchase of vac truck and wastewater for Wastewater Department. F, action regarding resolution 2022 to 2023 recommending award of bid to Tarrant County for 2022 community development block grant sidewalk project. G, action regarding authorization of indoor progress order with Timmy Horn for 2021 Saginaw Boulevard beautification project. H, action regarding purchase of a SCADA system upgrade for city's water system controls. J, action regarding upgrade to police department records management system and computer. K, action regarding memoriam memorandum of understanding between Saginaw Police Department and MSISD for jurisdictional issues, including citations and jail service. Down to O, action regarding purchase of skid loader for drainage department. And P, action regarding authorization of funding interim agreement for Old Decatur Road North roadway improvement. Any question on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda without I, L, M, and N as presented.
Charlie, second. Allored in favor, please vote. I almost did it. Motion passed. Let the director reflect. We have a quorum tonight, a full house. Thank y'all for a ticket. We will go to item I, action regarding police department system security upgrade. Chief Police Russell Raxler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The item you have here before you is a security system for the police department. It includes both interior and exterior cameras around the building. The current security system was put in place in 2007 when the building was completed, and those cameras are now outdated. You can't find cameras to replace them. Several are down and don't work, so this is actually a proposal to replace that system as a whole. We brought this to you during the budgetary process to address, and it's back before you now with our purchasing rules, and anything over $50,000 comes back before council for review, so that's why we're here.
Questions?
Yeah, the only question I had was, how are we funding this? The write-up in the things that we get didn't say anything about where we were going to take the money from.
It's budgeted in CCPD fund.
I'm sorry?
It's budgeted in the CCPD fund.
Okay, CCPD.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Any other questions on I? If not, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item I of the consent agenda.
Shall we take her side? Please vote. Motion passed. Thank y'all. Item L, action regarding revised school resource officer contracts for the period of October 1st to December 31st. Chief Police Russell Raxler.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is our MOU or contract that we have every year for our SROs. The SROs, as you know, are going away in December, but this is a contract to cover costs between October 1 and December when those officers are actually pulled back to our city for city use.
Questions for chief?
Yeah, I'm real happy with this, especially after the incident that we had not too long ago. I'm looking at section five. It says, "City agrees to assign four school crossing guards, one at the intersection of North Old Decatur Road," so on and so forth. But it, I mean, is that just for that three-month period, or?
So there's actually been a new development that occurred, I guess it was actually yesterday, and so the school district has elected to take on all school crossings at their own expense, and so we will not be providing crossing guards for those locations after yesterday.
Okay, so that is going to be a change to this?
It will be a change, yes.
Okay. So what are we doing here, then?
This actually covers the first three months, October through December.
Okay.
For our officers that are currently in the schools and for the expenses that we've had between October 1 and yesterday for crossing guard expenses.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions for the chief? I will entertain a motion on L.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda L as presented.
All right, now a second.
No second.
Cindy, please vote. Thank you, thank you, chief. M, action regarding memorandum of understanding temporary dispatch service provided to Blue Mountain Police Department. Before we go to that, Councilmember Copeland has a conflict, and she will excuse herself and abstain. So, thank you. Chief.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. What this is, is a MOU between us and Blue Mountain. So about three to four weeks ago, we sent out a memo to each of you indicating that on an emergency protocol, we'd be handling dispatch services for Blue Mountain at nighttime. Since that time, they've lost all their dispatchers. They have contracted with another city to provide dispatch services, but that contract has not been finalized. So what this MOU is, is a agreement for us to charge Blue Mountain to provide those services to them on the interim until they get that contract approved. They anticipate that'll be done by December 1, but there is a chance that there could be some delays. The agency that is handling this dispatch service for them has incurred a pretty tragic incident last week with the shootings. There could be some delays. I don't know that there will be, but there could be some potential delays. This contract just puts in, or MOU puts in place, a billing cycle, if you will, so we can bill them for the services that we're providing right now.
Did we try to talk to them and get that from them?
So we were in negotiations with Blue Mountain, but they did not accept any kind of bid from us. I won't get into the specifics of that between cities and the dynamics, but they didn't feel that Saginaw was the best option for them, so they didn't even entertain a bid from us.
That's what I was thinking. If they're going to use somebody else. I know they have a Watauga fire chief, and so, you know, so yeah. And we're right here, you know?
We are. For whatever reason, their leadership decided to go a different route. Their PD is still up and running at this point. They anticipate the police department will continue to operate through at least the first of the year, then they'll reevaluate at that point as to what they want to do with their future, if it's maintain the PD or look at sourcing out those police services.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? Yes, Cindy?
I understand, being a good neighbor, but I'm a little concerned that, you know, we've offered to help them and they turned down our offer, and then now they're asking us for help again. Why don't they reach out to Sansa Park for an MOU?
There's some logistic issues with radio channels and things of that nature that we're able to resolve for them on the spot. Part of our original gentleman's agreement, if you will, was to provide those services on an emergency status, and since they decided not to entertain a contract with us, we've had those discussions that, hey, we can't continue to do this for free. It's going to cost you a fee, and that's what this MOU is all about, is to establish that beginning November 1, that there'll be a fee associated with the services that we're providing, because it's no longer on a, on just a nighttime or emergency status. They have no dispatchers now, so it's a full-time status that we're dispatching for them. So that's the purpose of this MOU.
And it's not going to use any of our officers?
No, we don't have any sworn law enforcement officers that are answering calls, other than mutual aid, which we would do under any circumstance. They have their own officers. I think there's three officers still remaining, absent the interim chief that they have. They'll reevaluate that again after the first of the year as to how they want to move forward, if it's keep their PD and establish it with more officers, or if they want to fold up their PD and decide to do something different for police services.
So there is a possibility they could come back to us later and request additional help from us?
I think it would be immature for me to give you a yes or no answer on that.
I was just saying a possibility.
Yeah, I guess it is a possibility. You know, they could choose to go with county. They could choose to go with the city of Fort Worth. There's a number of options available to them that they could choose.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for M.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve agenda M as presented.
Second. Paul, thank you. Please vote.
It's like, why is he leaving? I forgot Mary was back there. Now's not the time to leave. I forgot Mary was back there.
It left the record show that Mary did it. Mary Copeland abstained from that. Item N, action regarding a drone show contract for 2022 holiday parade and Christmas tree lighting. I know Pedro is out, so who's going to do this in his stead?
Mayor, I'll try to take that one on.
First speaker, Randy Newsom.
Pedro had been talking about adding, trying to, there was some desire to add some kind of a wow factor to our, end of our Christmas parade, and so there was some discussion about possibly getting a laser light show, something along that line. And we talked to councilmember Junkersfield and councilmember Big Horse referred us to a company that does the power tech and stuff, and they didn't have anything with a laser, but they did have, what they started into is the drones. And they do these drone deals to themes like Halloween, Christmas. We went up to talk to them, and they came back and gave Pedro a package to do a laser, I mean, a drone show for us. They normally are $300 a drone, I think is what they quoted him, and they quoted us for 133. Give us a break, give us kind of a trial deal and see if we like it. It's probably going to be something that we're going to have to look at down the road in the very near future for fireworks display over on Fourth of July, because we're out of space with being able to shoot up traditional fireworks because of the development over there by the high school. So this is probably going to be something that we're going to be going to very near. So there are cities in our area that are doing, for instance, Christmas shows this year with drones. City of Dallas, City of Grapevine's doing two. Weatherford, North Crystal Hills, Mansville, Grapevine, Irving, Farmers Branch, Burleson, and Carrollton, just to name a few. I've seen a video. I've never seen it. I've seen the videos. They sent us the video over, and it's very, it's very cool. You can customize them. I mean, you can do all kinds of things with them. It's a big show, so. It is only eight minutes, but it appears to be longer because you're looking at, and they're always changing. You don't have to wait in between booms of the firework. They're quieter, cleaner. I think Fire Chief much rather have those than, I talked to him, he'd much rather have those than fireworks. You've got less people out there at the field putting out fires, less equipment out there, so I think it's probably going to be the thing of the future for us to look at, so. This is what he come up with.
I have one question.
Okay.
Do you know how far they can see that? Me and Todd were talking just a minute ago. So you know about how far it can be seen from?
I do not know that.
I didn't find out that question.
I know that they've already talked, that the operators of these things have to be FAA certified.
Yeah.
They've already taught them each of them, so, I mean, I think they can get up pretty high.
Yeah, I wanted to go. Yeah, I did.
I do not know that.
Can we find out? Just, and the reason I'm asking is because I'm thinking if we did Fourth of July or something off the elevator or something, because it's not fire. It won't blow up anything. I think that Saginaw could really have a big bang, you know?
Yeah. It has a lot of potential for a lot of things to do, so, and they can be launched from anywhere. You don't have to just, I mean, we can launch them over here and move them over here, you know, so.
That's true.
Yes, Mayor.
I think, I know the pet owners will be very happy.
Yes.
Because it does scare a lot of their pets, the fireworks.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Okay.
I've only got one question, really. Council meeting are two back. We turned down a Christmas tree at the rec center, but now we want to spend $20,000 on an eight-minute drone flight? I'm confused.
Well, the park guys here, Rock, can you come here?
Yeah.
Or Brack.
I know.
I mean, the Christmas tree would last 10, 15 years. This thing's going to last eight minutes?
Well, it's like the fireworks show. That doesn't last very long either, and it's less.
But it's still the fact we're spending $20,000 on an eight-minute show.
And I think Wendy has a thing to go up at the rec center, a tree.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, we're going to move one of our old trees up there and scoop it up a little bit. So there'll be a tree over there, so.
Mr. Tucker, I know you all voted on this last night, and so what I was interested, I'm glad they brought you up, but I was going to ask you to come out and tell us what were the discussions, because it's not on the, it's not on the website yet.
Well, I can tell you that when I first saw it, I looked at it, and I went, well, I know what I'm voting against. So I initially came to the meeting last night, prepared to vote against it, because it's $20,000, and I don't think, I didn't think we needed to expand it any. But some really good points were brought up. The fact that we're not going to be able to do another fireworks display, probably even as early as next year, for Fourth of July. We're going to have to come up with something different, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to see what we like, get some feedback. It's something brand-new that hasn't been done before, and I kind of want to get some feedback before we go into something that we know people are looking forward to Fourth of July. They want something with pop. They're expecting a big event on the Fourth of July, and I don't know that I want our first experience with a drone show to be that event. I kind of like to do a trial run with something that kind of exposes us to it, see if we like it or not. This is something that, in addition to the Christmas tree lighting and the parade and everything else that we have going on, I think it's a good opportunity for us to test it and make sure that it's something that we want to move forward with for the Fourth of July.
So I went and looked, I read the thing, and I looked at it, and then I actually, there wasn't, I actually went to YouTube. I tried to research it as much as I could. I've seen some. I've seen one at that big festival party they have out in the desert, and that was pretty neat. But then I seen others that kind of matched ours, and it's, they seem to be pretty simplistic for $20,000. I think we only get like eight, like four movable ones, and then four or five that's just like a Christmas box that are just stationary. So, you know, you calculate it out, you know, you're talking eight minutes, $20,000, that's 20-some hundred dollars a minute, and then you take the, take that $20,000, divide it out over the nine different little things. I was very concerned. It seemed to be a little pricey. Now, I haven't, I can understand if we mull it into, well, we're going to run out of, not be able to set fireworks off, which I think would be a shame. I like the loud. I like the different colors of the fireworks, so that's, that's going to be a hard sell. I like my fireworks.
Where are we going to do them?
That's, that's Gabe's problem.
And the mayor said we couldn't close down to it. I mean, the Saginaw Boulevard for an hour, they won't let us do that, so.
But anyway, so that was my big concern, was that. It was a little pricey, and it seemed to be pretty simplistic, and then, you know, but I guess if it's something we're evaluating and looking at, because we are, have to not have fireworks off, which would be a bummer for kids.
Yes. And you know, Christmas is something special.
They're all up and down the street.
Christmas is something special. It would be a big thing.
Was that we wanted to make sure, we're doing these radio spots for the Christmas parade. We want to make sure that if this does get approved, we don't want that to be just a surprise for everybody when they get there. We want to make sure that it gets promoted, that people know this is coming.
You know what? We might have Fourth of July here at Christmas, like they do over there at school.
Yeah, there you go.
So.
The money for this is coming out of the parks.
Out of the parks' board budget.
And they all passed it except for what, one?
It was six to one.
Okay. So.
Was the one that voted against, did they give a reason why? Was it mainly due to the money?
It was the cost, and which I think every one of us was kind of like, man, that's a lot of money, so. We did deliberate about it for probably 15 minutes, just kind of going back and forth on what we wanted to do.
Get in the Christmas spirit. Come on, guys.
Any other questions for Brack, ladies up here?
Are you finished with him?
Yeah.
No, she's not.
Question, okay.
Or, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
How much do the fireworks?
So, we were talking about that last night, and I think it was 17,000 or 18,000.
So it was, 20,000 is what it costs, but they're going up 30% to 40% increase in cost this year. So that's the reason why I reached out to the folks that councilmember Junkersfield and Big Horse.
Just say Valerie. It's okay.
They knew some folks that are local that could maybe help us out with the fireworks, but after talking to them, they reserved the first week before the Fourth of July and the next weekend after for their repeat customers, the regulars. So unless somebody canceled, we can't get into fireworks. That's how kind of we transitioned to the drone.
One of them lives here in Saginaw. I don't know, does the other one live in Saginaw? I didn't know y'all talked to Cindy until Randy said something.
I didn't know we talked to you.
I know.
We didn't know that. Come to find out, if we talked to both of them, that those two few work for this fly line.
Work at the same company.
The same company. Stephanie works up here at the pharmacy up here behind the Audi. She runs, she's the manager up there.
But does she live here in Saginaw? I know Blake does.
I think she does.
Oh, does she? Well, there you go, see.
So, and I think these are, these are kind of getting more and more popular with all the cities, and I think probably maybe they'll start coming down in cost, hopefully, in order to be more marketable. But like you said, we're kind of right here on the.
We got to do it tonight or else, I guess.
Yes. In order to make it by the third for the parade.
Think of Christmas.
Other questions?
Yes. Yeah, and I was going to bring up the point that Mary asked, that, you know, the cost of doing the fireworks had gone up considerably. It was going to cost us at least $20,000 for display this year. You kind of answered my question, I think. I just didn't want to have two major lighting-type events twice a year at this expense, so we don't plan on doing this again for Christmas in the future, or is there a possibility that we could replace the July 4th with this Christmas display?
I personally don't want to trade off not doing something on the Fourth of July. I think that's a big enough event. It's being well-attended. I don't know numbers in comparison to like training grain, but there were a lot of people.
There were a lot of people.
There was a big crowd.
And it's very well-received, and I think that people feel like they're putting the dollar in every month with their water bill, and when we do events like that, I think it, and they're well-received, they feel like they're getting value back out, even though it's a 20-minute display or whatever. I think it communicates more than what just the cost is. So I don't want to lose July 4th.
Okay.
And we haven't had any discussions about continuing in future years with this. But I do feel like it's a good opportunity for us this year to see how it performs and see if we like it, and see if we want to continue.
And you know, the more they get used, it might be that we could get a frequent flyer discount, you know, or keep using it, so.
And a local frequent flyer.
That's right.
And that's one of the things I'm happy about. We're using our local, and it basically is a small business that, you know, we're supporting. I appreciate that. I had no idea that they did the drones. I thought they were purely fireworks, you know, when I made the recommendation. So, you know, when this came up, I was, like you, I was a little like, nah, I don't think so. But if we're just doing this one as a test run, I think it's a great idea, and especially supporting local businesses or, you know, local people who work in businesses is even better. So thank y'all, you and Randy both, for the work that y'all put in.
And you said the radio station would also broadcast it too, advertise it?
Yes, yes, they're going to broadcast it. If we pass it tonight, then.
So see, this has got to be a really good parade this year, y'all.
Is there music tied in with these drones?
We're going to talk to them and see about doing it with music.
Okay.
Yes, that is something we're looking at.
Do we need to go visit with Stephanie?
We're going to do it.
And Charlie, Randy did say that they would put a Christmas tree at the rec center, and he'll make it beautiful.
You know what we could do to get the police chief really excited is use the fireworks to shoot down the drones.
Let's not go that far, okay? Let's not.
Be a lot more expensive.
Yeah. Last year, I was out at Texas Motor Speedway when Eddie Gossett retired, and they did one of these drone shows, and it was really impressive. It was set to music and everything, and it was really cool. One thing I'd like to look at, you know, with the parks, is possibly, let's do something for training grain to keep people there, because before I left, there was bands playing, and nobody was there listening to them. Let's keep the audience and maybe draw more people by doing some type of event.
That's what I said, frequent flyers. I've got to think about these discounts.
Any questions for Brack?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
No more.
Council, other questions? Questions, comments, anything other feedback? If not, I'll entertain a motion for M. No, N.
N. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve action N on the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Mary and Cindy?
We got a second and a third over there.
Please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Hallelujah.
I pushed the wrong one, sorry.
You pushed the wrong one?
I tried to push yes. I was fat fingered it, sorry.
Oh, no, that's a green.
Can I change it? Is it too late to change? Because I did not mean to. What should we do?
Janice, do you have a green mark?
Randy, what should I do?
I think it's fine as long as Janice notes it in the minutes.
Okay. My bad, I pushed the wrong button. Sorry. Okay, those are best. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Brack. Appreciate it. So we are finally through the consent agenda. Hallelujah. All right, item five, recognition of 2023 Training Grain Festival committee members. For that, City Manager, Gabe Ray.
Mayor, council want to take a quick minute to recognize our committee members who did the hard work of planning throughout the year for the Training Grain Festival. So thank you all. We're in attendance on October 15th. It was a great day. We were lucky to have great weather and good lineup of entertainment. So early in '23, once we get the approval on the athletic schedule from the school district, we'll know our date for Training Grain '23, although preparations for next year's event are in process as we speak. So I'm going to read a list of names and also want folks to understand that not just these people worked the event. We had over 100 staff and volunteers on the day of the event, as well as the evening before. I think Randy had some folks there at 4:30 or 5:00 in the morning. So it made for a long day, but it's worth it because people really, really enjoy it. And these special events are a lot of fun, but they cost money. So we had over $35,000 alone just in staff time and overtime for the event. So I want to recognize the committee members, Colton Reasoner, Corey Smith, Dusty Langley with EMS ISD, Kim Quinn, Keith Reinhardt, Susie Victor Trevino, Jared Kersey, Vicky Weldon, Glenn Reeves, Randy Newsom, Janice England, Karen Cromwell, Scott Craver, Joe Laster, Corey Burnett, James Crippen, Melanie McManus, Ellen Ritchie, and Pedro Zambrano. So again, we're looking forward to next year, and we should be able to lock the date down early in '23.
Hey, big thanks, everybody. That was an awesome event. Really impressed how it turned out. We have any idea of the attendance? Did we get a count at all? Estimates?
You know, it's in the thousands. I don't know that we have, you know, a clicker, but our parking was full throughout the day. We had a few curveballs. Our last booked entertainment canceled in the afternoon. But I think crowds were pretty steady throughout.
No, it was a great event. It was awesome. I appreciate all the staff's hard work. I know a lot of folks put a lot of hours into that. So thank you all very much. The community really appreciate it. All right, item number six, proclamation for Get United Day. So I will read this proclamation. Whereas United Way of Tarrant County is celebrating 100 years of serving restaurant residents across Tarrant County and Saginaw. District Member, whereas United Way of Tarrant County empowers residents, volunteers, donors, businesses, governments, nonprofits, and community stakeholders to come together not only fix problems, but tackle the reasons the problem exists in the first place. And whereas United Way of Tarrant County is supporting major areas of need in our communities and across the county, including education and learning, financial stability, community health, and community response. Whereas United Way of Tarrant County works to build relationships and trust alongside the communities in which it serves. And whereas United Way of Tarrant County encourages all restaurants to get, residents to get united to create change and build strong communities for all, by all. Be it therefore resolved that we, the city of Saginaw, do hereby recognize United Way of Tarrant County for supporting our communities and enriching the lives of everyone in Saginaw and Tarrant County. Be it therefore resolved that we, the city of Saginaw, do hereby congratulate United Way of Tarrant County on the occasion of their 100th anniversary. And now therefore, I, Todd Filippo, Mayor of Saginaw, and the Saginaw City Council, do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2022, as Get United Day in the city of Saginaw, and ask all residents to join in the celebration of and commitment to the important work to be done in our communities for the next 100 years. When it is therefore, I do set my hand to this seal, the 15th of November to 2022. I don't believe we have a representative from United Way here, but we will ensure they get this. So thank you, United Way. Moving forward, item number seven, service action regarding rate increase requests from Waste Connections for solid waste and recycling services. For that, Assistant City Manager, Lee Howe.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, we have a contract with Waste Connections for urban trash and garbage collection for the city. That contract's been in place since 2007. There's a mechanism, a process within the contract for Waste Connections to ask for rate increases on an annual basis. It's based on the Urban Cities Garbage Trash Collections Consumer Price Index, which the Bureau of Statistics, U.S. Bureau of Statistics calculates and tracks on a monthly and annual basis. So for the period of September 2021 through September 2022, that CPI for this service rose 5.4%. The Waste Connections has asked for a 5% increase for city residential and commercial trash service within the city. And that 5% would take the current monthly rate of $12.95 up to $13.60, so a 65 cent increase to residential customers and a proportionate percentage increase to commercial customers. This would take effect in the December billing. And we have with us tonight District Manager for Waste Connections, Abel Moreno, and of course, everyone knows Mr. Norm Boulosch. They can answer any questions you might have about operational issues. And we've gotten, I will say that we've gotten excellent service from Waste Connections. I've had the opportunity to call Abel a couple of times this year on some special things, and he's jumped right on it and got with it. We have very few complaints regarding Waste Connections service, so we'll be able to answer any questions you have.
Council, any questions? For either Lee or the Waste Connections folks?
My only question was, I seen where it said it was a nationwide rate increase. I mean, what's? And I remember I sent a question and asking about, well, what's the local? I mean, I don't want us to be paying for New York or San Francisco. Because 5%, I mean, I know that's a little bit, and it's more than what most people are probably going to get in their raises this year. And so I know in the past, it was around, two years it was, it went through. There wasn't any, and then there was like some 2.5%. So I was, you know.
I'm not sure we have a true local rate. Abel might be able to.
Because I'm looking at the cost, right? So that's really what this is supposed to be, is to cover your all's cost increase, right?
Yes, sir. Correct. Currently, the Dallas Fort.
Abel, will you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. My name is Abel Moreno, the District Manager for Waste Connections. We office out of Haltem City, so we're right down the road. Specifically, the Dallas-Fort Worth CPI, if you consider all items in Dallas-Fort Worth, that CPI was an increase of 9% during that same time period. We use the garbage and trash collection in the U.S. City Average, which is substantially lower than the Dallas-Fort Worth. So it was, the contract is favorable in this circumstance to the city of Saginaw. And I can assure you, the 5%, although it is high with inflation, the way it is today, you know, these, it doesn't go to our bottom line. We have to make sure we allocate these, the increase properly. We've got maintenance to upkeep. We've got new trucks we have to purchase. After 10 years, we need to purchase new vehicles. Next year, we've got four in line. One of those new trucks is going to be in the city of Saginaw. We also have drivers, and the gentleman in the back of the truck, they need the increase. It's not easy to find individuals to throw trash nowadays, and we have to pay them. So that's what the increase is for.
So what was your increase for your guys on the back of the truck, then?
6%.
6%, okay, good.
I think y'all, I let them start to work earlier because they were at my house last night after dark. I felt sorry for them. And I know that, you know, so.
They work very hard.
They do. They do. They do.
Any other questions for Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I have one. I'm just kind of curious. You said DFW area was like 9%. Why is this area so much higher than the nation?
DFW is all items. So when you combine all items, that's not just garbage and trash collection, that's everything. That's consumer goods, everything. That's what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I'm just thankful for what they do.
I know.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Council, any other questions for staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Hi, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the rate increase request from Waste Connections for solid waste and recycling services.
I'll second.
Charlie Tucker, second. Please cast your votes.
We all second, I think.
Thank you, guys. Look forward to more good relationship with y'all. Appreciate it.
Boy, your retirement, Norm.
I said, your raise, the TCU is doing well. How's that, Norm?
That's right.
There you go. I know you're a happy man. All right, item eight, consideration action regarding ordinance 2022-27, amending the residential trash and recycle rate, amending deposit amount for the rental of the community center. For that, City Secretary, Janice England.
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance 2022-27 will amend the master fee schedule to reflect the garbage rate that was just approved. And also, it will amend the deposit amount for the rental of the community center. Back when we did the budget, we amended the fee schedule, and for whatever reason, this one didn't get amended. The rental deposit for the rec center did, but not the community center. So we wanted to make sure that they were the same, and the fee schedule needs to reflect that.
Okay. Any questions for Janice? Don't entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding ordinance number 2022-27, amending the residential trash and recycle and the deposit for the community center.
I'll have a second. Cindy Big Horse, please cast your votes. Most of them passed. Thank you, Janice. Item number nine, library senior center design update. Assistant City Manager, Lee Howe. This is exciting.
Thank you, Mayor, members. Yes, this is exciting. So for the last few months, you've been getting some little written updates and like the Friday reports, maybe a few emails. Now we have some actual things to show you. There's been a lot of work being done during that time period. And got a presentation here that sort of takes us from the beginning to where we are today, and then kind of shows you, I'll give you a little timeline toward the end here. So giving credit where credit's due, this slide shows you some of the professionals that are involved with our architectural design, not only PGA L, but Teak Knoll and Perkins, JQ Engineering, MEPCE, which is our mechanical, electrical, plumbing contractor, NV5, who is in charge of our technology and security consultancy, and then 720 Design, which is pretty much the premier library architectural service in this area for expertise in library design and library furniture. So in the beginning, we, I want to emphasize the fact that this has been a very collaborative effort with the citizenry. Lots and lots of people have weighed in on the design process. We started, some of y'all were present during some meetings that we had with the senior group. They went through a two or three day meeting process over the course of a couple of months with the architectural firm in telling us what their priorities were and what they wanted to see in a new building. And I will say that the architectural firm has paid a lot of attention to those meetings and those desires in the design. I include this slide just to show you that we had a lot of different meetings involving staff, citizenry. You'll see people in this photograph that are senior center users, end users, library end users, library board members, and staff people. And that process has continued, or that kind of collaboration has continued through this whole design process. Gabe might have mentioned once or twice that there's different vernacular and terminology in the architectural fields and engineering fields, and we've learned a lot of new words. This right here is a picture of what's called an adjacency charrette. I'm not even sure what a charrette still is, or why it needs to be adjacent to anything. But what that was, was we went through a process of several days where we basically took all the functions that are included in a library and a senior center, laid them out on site maps, and determined what needed to be next door to each other, how the processes would flow best, what different sections of the library, let's say, should be coordinated and laid out, and how it would best flow. So a lot of work, a lot of background went into this process. So after that. There we go. These are some of the early conceptual designs that that group of people and some other people came up with. You can see they're two very different things, but we ended up with a site design that I think makes the best use of the basic four and a half acres that we have to work with. Keith, you may have to help me stand that back. We went through a number, this scenario and many like it have repeated itself over and over again on about a weekly or bi-weekly basis, where we have examined interior and exterior design components and materials. And made some choices on that. I will say that not all the choices have been made in regards to the materials and the colors and things like that yet. And some of the pictures I'll be showing you here in a second are just examples. They're not in any way, shape, or form necessarily the finished product, the way it would be finished out. But anyway, long story short, there's been a lot of work and a lot of detail in how we've gotten to where we are today. And in the next two to three months, and things are going to happen really fast, or what seemingly fast compared to the last several months, and you'll start to see things take a little better shape. This is just a site design of the finished site. You'll notice there's two entrances off McLroy. There's another entrance off what is now, right now, the dead end of K Lane up in the right-hand corner there, the northeast corner. You can flow with a vehicle or pedestrian all the way around the building. And there's a lot of features on the backside of it that we're taking advantage of. These aerial views show you that the two buildings are, if you can think about it as two separate buildings combined under one roof, basically. There's the way we, with the square footage that we had to work with and the site plan, it was determined fairly early on that the best advantage to take for combining some of the resources in the building and staying within our budget was to have the buildings connected so that both sides of the operation could take advantage of some of those features. The, again, these are just, these are conceptual drawings, there's been a couple of changes since these were done, these are what's called the 50% construction documents, we're working up to the 100% construction documents within the next couple of months.
Lee?
Yes?
Behind you.
Where'd you go?
Whenever you're ready, just let me know. I'm watching, I'm studying your thumb, but I can't tell when you're pushing, or...
Yeah, you're doing great.
Just let me know when.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Okay, so, I don't know how well you can see this, but just, just quickly, the, yeah, the, the left side of this, this site diagram is the library, the right-hand side is the senior center. The library, right now, well, it's to be designed as a partially second, have a second floor. The senior center will be all one floor. Just taking you around from the, the little alcove right there in the middle is the main entrance. There's two main front doors, one goes into a common lobby, the one on the right-hand side is specific to enter for, for the senior side, and if, if you looked back at that, we don't need to go back to it necessarily, but if you look back at that site plan, immediately in front of the senior center, of course, are all the handicap spots, make it convenient, and a good amount of parking there right on the front, to make it convenient to get into the senior side. First thing you kind of see when you walk into the senior side, you look across to the entrance of the multipurpose rooms, and I'll go over that in a little more detail in a second. Just a couple of features to point out, you'll see on the senior side are the two largest restroom facilities, so that they're convenient to the senior side. Those will have easy access, kind of open access, they're going to be equipped with, all of them will be equipped with handrails, tall features, and be convenient to the, to, since the senior group will have large crowds on, on their side of the building, especially in those multipurpose rooms, and on a daily basis sometimes, that's where the majority of the, of the restroom facilities are located. The, down, down to the immediate right-hand side on the, on the photograph of the restroom is a full kitchen facility. It'll be pretty well-equipped to do just about anything. They'll have a walk-in pantry, some more storage areas, and some, some nice features. Immediately to that, a fitness room, if you go up the, the east side of the building, there's a fitness room, a craft room, and two activity rooms. The craft room, of course, is, well, any of these rooms can be locked up and secured, so the craft room especially, I know that was important to a lot of people, that, that they could start projects and just leave them in place and lock, lock the room up. Moving to the very northeast corner, that's actually an outdoor covered patio area, is, that'll be a really nice feature in good weather, of course. And then, the, the biggest area, the expanded area there, that's, that stretches almost across the entire part of that, that diagram, those, there's four areas there that are what we're calling the multipurpose rooms. They can open up all at once into one giant room, or they can be divided up into four separate rooms. So, when it's all opened up, it's over 5,000 square feet, and I have a couple other renderings here in a little bit to show you some more about that. So, the, the open space right in front of that, I don't know if you, I don't think you can read it on this, but, yeah, the, the community living room, in, right in front of the multipurpose rooms? Yeah, yeah, kind of right in the center of there. Anyway, that's a, another nice feature, it's set up to be just a comfortable spot to commune and have a little, have some conversations, maybe drink a cup of coffee. And then, working your way back over to the west, the, or in the multipurpose rooms at least, you have exits out to the back side of the building from all of those rooms. There's a little stage platform, which can be used for a number of things, but if they wanted to have a concert, or something, or have a speaker, guest speaker, or something that's, you can use that. So, that, that multipurpose room will be set up with some pretty sophisticated technology, video screens, and sound systems, and it'll be usable for a number, a number of events, types of events. Once again, that, if you'll move a little bit over there, the common, the, yeah, now let me, so this, this diagram, before I get off the multipurpose rooms there, this diagram, this shows you some different layouts of how the multipurpose rooms could be used. So, the, the bottom right, right-hand corner is, there's 24 tables of eight, so it would seat at least 192 people. You could put a couple more tables up on the platform area if you wanted to, to put it up, put it over 200. Different configurations, you can seat quite a few people, just chair to chair, and that's a good thing and a bad thing for us, because one thing is that, that pushes the actual potential maximum occupancy load of that building over what we actually have in available parking spaces in the parking lot. So, we're going to have to probably go to the Board of Adjustments for, for variance on that, but we talked it through a little bit, and I think we can ask to use the parking spaces over here across the street as extra park, overflow parking, in the event that we had that many people. It's highly unlikely that we would have that many people in there seated in that configuration, but it is the, the maximum occupancy possibility. So, on to the library side, just real quickly. This particular slide here just kind of shows you that we're, we're really maximizing the use of all the available space, and I should say this right up front, but there's, the whole building is about 43,000 square feet, and the original allocation was 30,000 for the library side and 10,000 for the senior side, it's just slightly over that in total square footage as designed. But, there's a lot of, a lot of things packed into the library side. And on the library side, there's children's activity rooms, family reading rooms, several study rooms, a teen area, separate teen area. The return and staff area is up in the front, on the south end there, very, on the front, so that the, there's a drive-up, convenient drive-up return or checkout where people can pull up to a, to a manned window and receive or return things. Just inside that area, there'll be, there's two elevators designed, one, a public elevator, and one has a controlled access. In case one elevator does go down, they both can become public elevators, or if they need to be. There's what we're calling kind of a grand staircase, which you can kind of barely see in that diagram, but it's the, it goes up just inside the main entrance to the right and upwards, and then makes a left-hand turn to the, to the second floor. Let me go to the next slide. Yeah, no, the, next one? Yeah, so, keep going, next one. There you go, that one, thank you. So, that's, this is the second floor diagram. More staff work area there on the, on the bottom end, which is the, the south end. There's a large meeting room, which we're calling the boardroom, some more study facilities. There's kind of a, something I guess that every library should have, is, which is a quiet room up in the far corner. There's another, there's a community living room, so similar sort of thing that we have in the senior center there on the second floor on the north end. And again, lots of book shelves and racks for periodicals and everything you can imagine. So, any questions about that before we move on?
Questions for, this is the city manager?
I have a question for the outside, not the inside.
I, I have a question, I don't know if it's here or not. So, I, I know there's been, I know you guys have been really stretching the dollar here as things have been going through the roof, and what I wondered is, when you're getting into things like that, we've eaten up all of our budget, or so to say, everything we put ahead, what has we had to give up, things that the park and our senior citizen center really wanted, that we've just had to get, what's those painful things we've had to give up to make this happen because of the environment we're in right now?
Yeah, that's, we've, we've had to, we've gone through several redesigns on some of the, the design elements of the building, to reduce the height of it, change the roof line. We, yeah, I mean, immediately, that was like, that's like the number one battle that we've had, and, and obstacle that we had to overcome is staying within budget. We've, by bringing burn construction on early, we, we've gotten them to help us quite a bit on our cost estimating, and we asked them to do an estimate a few months back, which lowered the roof design and redesigned that, and took some of the more expensive exterior features off, which we can still put on as add alternates to, on the bid, but it reduced, we, we thought it was going to reduce the overall line, but in the same time that they were calculating that estimate, concrete, glass, and metal all went up in price, which we're building, a building full of concrete, metal, and glass, and the actual overall cost went up $750,000, rather than coming down, we calculated it, it shouldn't drop at about $1 million, but it actually went up $750,000. So, there's been some things like that we've had to live with and swallow. You know, looking at the timeline, we're hoping to put this out to bid in the early spring, so probably, hopefully March, somewhere around that idea, around that time. No telling where the prices are going to be at that point, but there's some other things, like, we'd, we'd like to have the, a backup generator for the building, but we're, and we're going to wire that in, so it's ready for one, but that's sort of a luxury item that we've put on hold, it could be, again, it could be an add alternate. I was, on the original design, one of the things that a lot of people said they wanted was, was green space, available green space, so, and I should have pointed this out, but on the, on the site plan, on, in the back of the building, there's a oval-shaped feature that's a, that's a grassy area that could be used for a number of things. We originally wanted, thought about designing that for a number of reasons, to be artificial turf, but that is much more costly than real grass, at least in the short run, so right now it's playing for real grass, which is, which is great, I think everybody's fine with that, but we were going to have a little kind of wall around there, we've, we've had to redesign that, so there, there's a number of things that we've cut back on that were, I suppose, considered luxury features.
So, the good thing, the generator, we've got to build in large, we can come back in later with not, it, it's not going to cost us, we won't have to go back and redo what we've already done, so.
Exactly. So, yeah. Right. We'll, we'll, we'll wire it up to be, to accept a generator. Also, we're going to, we're going to put in conduit, things like conduit for EV charging stations, but we don't have that in the budget. So, it'll be ready to add those in, you know, as soon as we could afford to do it.
Will we get a grant?
Yeah, will we get a grant, right, right.
Can we utilize the generators from the fire station?
How much was it?
The, the generators that are at the fire station currently, because I think the news station is getting new ones, correct, Chief?
Well, one of the generators is just about wore out, but one of them is available, but it's not near big enough to, to run that facility, it runs some key items, so I don't know if it'd be worth to put it in and then turn around and have to get the proper size for the building.
Is there any reason why we would not, or would we ever consider using this library senior center as a warm place, you know, if we have another major outages? If that's the case, then it seems like a generator would be a necessity?
Yeah.
Or we just gambling that we're not going to have another winter like we had in '21?
Yeah, it's, it won't, it, it won't at all be designed as a shelter, but it could be a warming station, and that, that was one of the thoughts, that it, and that we could power up, like the, the senior side, the multipurpose area, and the kitchen and the restroom area in an emergency, but, and, and we may still be able to, to add that in at some point in the not-too-distant future.
In last year's budget, y'all did approve funds for a generator for the rec center, because recreation center's always been a, an emergency evacuation center, so first-case scenarios, we will have at least one.
Okay.
With, in our city.
Well, the great thing, the way you guys have designed it and stuff, is, is we can add that generator on it, you had no extra costs other than the cost of the generator installed, at a later date, a year, getting open in two years, so we could actually, if we wanted to, budget into our regular budget, and, you know, do it that way.
Truth be known, you probably couldn't get one for at least two years right now, because they are extremely hard to come by. Ours still won't be there till January, and we ordered it nearly two years ago. So, and the prices are inflated because of that reason, too.
There's, there's a few other things, too, that we've already kind of trimmed, like our landscaping budget probably is, was originally pretty, you know, really nice and fairly elaborate, but we're going to probably reduce that. There's some other things that, you know, because the, the site is completely surrounded by the residential homes, we're going to have to put, construct a fence, and so the fencing materials, you know, have gone through, we've gone through the, the list of potential materials for that, and we'll probably have to go with a little cheaper thing. I'll show you in a minute some of the, well, some of the, the roof features that we had to trim, and that we are still, we're still debating on, is the underside of the roof, we want it to have a wood look. It's actually going to be a metal product, we've gone through, there's, a first choice was a very expensive metal product, probably going to have to go with a, a secondary product on that, because that's a considerable savings. So, there's, I mean, there's a lot, there's a long list of things that we've already kind of started with, and, you know, best-case scenario, and then kind of had to cut back.
So, the outside of the building doesn't look anything like a depot, that's what PGA L, remember when you said something about how they did a depot look, it doesn't look anything like that?
There's...
And that's something the citizens had asked for as well, the outside as well as the inside?
So, the, there, there's a, there's a, there's a, a reason for that, one of the, one of the reasons was in the roof design, the roof, you know, the roof design has been changed considerably from where, where it started. The other was simply... The other was simply a, kind of a utility sort of thing. You, you know, when you look at the designs that we looked at, and I've got a couple of pictures, actually, of some, some train depots that we, um, you know, that we, we looked at, if you...
Is that what it looks like?
Well, yeah, this, this is, um, this is a, a rendering of what the outside of the building, front of the building would look like as designed right now. The, now, we, in that picture, in that, you can't really, you don't really see, uh, things like the true texturing of some of the outer products. And again, that's just, that's about half of the building there, it's not the whole building. There's about, there's six or seven different exterior products that will go into it, so, from, from metal to stone to glass to brick, um, to actually some wood, uh, that, on the exterior.
The wood that you was talking about for the metal, is that that overhang?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's, that's actually all...
I can see that now.
Yeah, it's metal and glue lamb beams is, as designed right now. So, um, there's a few other features, uh, where you see the, the words Saginaw Public Library and Senior Center, you can't really tell from there, but there's an overhang there that is, you know, we're trying to determine right now how, what to fabricate that out of, but it would, we need something that would give people a little bit of protection, waiting on them to be picked up or something, uh, or, or exiting, entering, exiting vehicles, but, or the doorways. So, that's another thing that we're debating on cost from, but, um, in, hopefully in January, uh, we will have, uh, the architectural team back with a full rendering for y'all to see. They have a very sophisticated software program that you can actually do virtual reality exploration through the building with. So, you can actually, if you want to, you can, they can carry you through the entire building in that program, but you can actually put on a virtual reality goggles and, you know, pilot yourself through the building and, and look up and down and inside walls and everything, but, uh, it's pretty amazing. And, uh, at that point, we'll have, we'll bring them back for a presentation for you with, um, a lot more detail on what we have to say.
You might, you might talk about the site visits, the library board, and Ellen visited some libraries, if you could maybe talk about that?
Yeah, sure, um, yeah, we, we visited, um, I think six, with the six libraries total, and, um, four senior center for, or community center facilities. Some of those were actually library, senior center joined buildings, very similar to this, uh, over in Richardson, um, a couple of other places. One of the ones that I think everybody really liked on the library tour was the Sagan Public Library. It ha, it shares a lot of features, very similar to the design of this one, it's a beautiful building. Capel was another one that I think people really liked, the Capel Senior Center. So, um, we, we gathered a lot of, uh, features and design features from those site visits that, um, were, were things that people said they, they really wanted, and they're designed in there. So, these, I've just got a few more, yes, ma'am, you can.
I have a question about the handicap part. According to this layout, you only have nine handicap spaces for a senior center, I think that seems kind of low. Especially since you were joining the library. Why is that? And I know you've only said that you have to go to the board of adjustment, but, um, I'm, I know from teaching classes over at Terracotta College with seniors, that, uh, the seniors never had those parts, which, that's, it was always taking up. And it looks like we're setting ourselves up for the same problem here.
Yeah, that, on that rent, that diagram, that's the required number, just for a, just for a count and to see how, how it played out. We can add additional handicap spaces in there, um, but that's, that just depicts the required number, so.
Oh, no, I have my thing on, nine's just not enough, as far as I'm concerned, not for what this facility is designed to do. And you're already saying that you have problems with the capacity of the building, plus, you know, the number of parking spaces that are available.
Yeah, there, and, and, yes, and it, there's, the, the issue comes in, in the actual, the very maximum capacity occupancy, based on, on how many spaces are required by code for that. You know, realistically, if, we'd have to have, uh, I think there's two, something, it's two hundred and sixty-five spaces or something like that, so, um, I think it'd be a while before we'd ever exceed that, but it, it certainly is possible. Just to go through the rest of these pictures if I can, this is that, uh, community living center, I mean, community living room area on the senior side, when you first kind of come in and go down the hallway. This, again, the, the furniture depicted in there is not exactly what it'll look like, but, uh, it'll have a fireplace and some audiovisual equipment, um, nice little feature. This is, uh, on the library side, I talked about the staircase, um, this is actually what the, I think we're calling the, uh, Business Media Center, is that right, Ellen? And then, um, go ahead, next one? Well, this depicts two of the multipurpose rooms, and the, at the far end there, you'll see the platform stage area. So, again, this is about half of what the, the multipurpose rooms, uh, could be, and the, and of course, each one, again, can be divided up into smaller rooms, anywhere from about seven hundred fifty to fourteen hundred square feet, I believe, individually. And, um, last but not least, this is that oval grassy area at the back of the building. You can see we're, uh, showing the lady and the tramp, I think it is there, on the, uh, side of the building. But that's, that's designed right now to be where, where we can actually project movies out there, um, at night, have people sit out on the lawn, enjoy a little film. So, anyway, I'll, uh, stop there and, and answer any more questions we might have.
Is that space detention as well? That, the green space is that detention pond as well, is that what it said on the drawing?
Yes, there, well, yeah, it'll be open on, kind of on the sides with like a fence barrier, just to, because you do have the potential for car traffic coming all the way around there, so we wanted to sort of set up a little barrier, just to keep kids from being in danger there.
And will it be full of water? Is it will be retention?
Oh, the, the retention pond?
Yeah.
It, so the retention pond is probably gonna be sometimes a mud hole, and sometimes a nice grassy area, it depends on, it'll depend on the weather.
Okay.
It's not gonna be full of water, so, yeah, it's depicted as, um, right now, just as a, a grassy area, 'cause that's the way it will look most of the time.
Like a jogging track, right?
Right, yes.
Can we not, how, why can we, why can't we make those some in the pond and make it pretty? Is that...
We could, it's just, if you dig it out as a, as a true pond, it's just a ma, a little bit bigger maintenance issue. And, and it doesn't, it's not required for the, the runoff that's on that property.
Right.
But we do need to have, it, it does slope in that direction, so we do need to have something where the water can puddle, essentially.
Is there, um, it, it looks like at the front of the senior center, there's a drop-off area, is that gonna be covered to protect seniors from the weather? I know the way the building's oriented, we can protect them from the north wind, but, you know...
Yeah, we, we started with a, a design, uh, that had, had a cover that came out into the parking area, where we went under there. And when we met with, um, some of our other collaborators, uh, mostly like staff, um, actually the fire marshal and a couple of other people, uh, looked at the way that the traffic would have to flow to get underneath that cover, and it was not the safest design. So, we backed that off, made the, the drop-off area, and created that other door that's closer to the senior side. So, you can get pretty close there and get under cover fairly quickly, but it doesn't extend out over the parking lot.
It would extend where they were standing, just not where cars.
Right, right, and, and that's, that has a lot to do with the, the traffic flow around the building, and, you know, if you'll notice, on the other side, we have the, that, um, checkout return window for the library side, and so you had, you had people coming from both sides, kind of meeting in the middle and trying to squeeze pedestrian traffic potentially right between them, it just wasn't a real safe design.
And am I reading this, uh, little circle drop-off area? You're gonna come in from the east, go around, and then you're gonna have to exit east again? You'll come, you'll be heading west, and then you, 'cause it looks like it's forcing you to... So, you won't be able to go toward the library, you'll have to go back?
You can, you can come, you can go from, you know, in either direction from that loop. Uh, you don't have to circle backwards, you can, you can come all the way over toward the library and come out, or you can go back either, either way. You, you, there's some raised areas there, just to kind of slow people down, uh, where pedestrians might be in between those parking spaces in the building.
Yeah, I guess I just don't see it in my, in my mind.
You see where they had the, there's the little blue squares kind of thing, so right in there?
Yeah.
Those, that's not a barrier, it's just a, it's, you can drive through there, that area. I mean, you can drive perpendicular to the, to the...
So, off to the left, I mean, off to the right of that blue area, that's gonna be flat? It's gonna be even with the ground, or is that gonna be a curb?
It's, it's not, it's just a little raised area, it's just to, to kind of, to, you know... Yeah, a speed bump, essentially, um, a minor speed bump, but you can drive all the way across either of those connected parking areas, or, uh, from one side of the building to the other, on the front.
Another question for Lee.
Good.
So, expect more in January or so, another update with the, the VR?
Yes, sir, um, so, the, the timeline as it is right now, we should have, um, a hundred percent construction documents by, hopefully about the end of the year, or shortly after the first of the year. Uh, we go into the permit, permitting process about that time. We'd like to get, um, the architect team back in with that virtual reality, uh, presentation in January, and then we turn it over to the bid process and hopefully get started in construction sometime in March or April at the, at the latest.
What does the future look like for the building materials?
It's, it, it's still, it's iffy, you know, I think, the, things have sort of leveled out, actually, um, some metal and wood products have come down slightly. They're not expecting it to go anywhere back to close to where it was before the huge increase of the last year. So, it's still gonna be probably a thirty percent or more increase in most of it, um, from where it was when we actually estimated the cost originally in twenty nineteen for this project. So, um, we estimated twenty-seven million dollars, it's for the, for the total project, you know? In, in today's dollars, that's more like thirty-five or forty, um, if we estimate it with the same cost estimate product.
But are we gonna be able to get those materials?
Yeah, we, we, we should be, oh, they're writing other, well, again, we, things can change in three or four months, but, um, right now, the, the burn construction is not having problems getting most of the materials. There are some delays, and they can, that's one good thing about having them onboard already, is they're watching for shortages on, on anything, um, and they have the ability to pre-buy it or pre-order it and, and warehouse it until they get to that point in the construction. So, and they're willing to do that, so, we're, we're hoping not to have any delays, there, there could always be something that just vanishes off the market for a, for a while. Especially if construction picks back up at the pace it was this past spring, in, in the coming spring, then it could be a little bit of a scramble to get some things, but right now, we're not predicting anything at the moment.
All right, thank you, Lee, appreciate it, sir, appreciate the update. Moving forward, item number ten, Recognition Act regarding Recommendation and Planning and Zoning Commission Regarding Final Plats for Lots Three and Four Block One, The Square Benjamin Thomas Survey. Uh, who is that, is that Sista Suzie, is that John?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, originally, we had a planned speaker for tonight, but, uh, I think Mr. Angsworth is not gonna be able to make it, so, I will try to brief you on this and, uh, get through really quick. So, let me just start off by saying, this is not a final plat, uh, that has yet to be submitted and, um, looked at and approved. The, uh, the conveyance plat is really just for business purposes, uh, it's really just to convey the, uh, the property, and I think it's mentioned in here, it's, uh, lots three and four, block one. Uh, this is for the, uh, Square Plan District. So, really, the point is for, like I mentioned, business purposes, uh, it meets all the conformities of the, uh, city, it's been reviewed by DRC, so, kind of need this to, they, they just need this to go through so they can, uh, move forward.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions, concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I make the motion that we approve, uh, ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash nineteen, uh, which is amending the zoning ordinance, section seven-one, PD, Plan Development District.
Nope.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not doing that.
Wait a minute, you're confusing me.
Oh, number two.
We're number ten, Mary.
Okay, I'm sorry, I make the motion that we approve the recommendation from planning and zoning regarding the final plat, which is a conveyance plat for lots three and four, block one, The Square.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
May I approach him second? Please cast your votes. There you go, thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right. Item number eleven, Recognition Act for Reestablish a Chamber of Commerce, uh, two thousand twenty, Strategic Work, uh, Project List and Work Plan Item. I think this is Keith, right?
I believe so. Earlier this year, almost a year ago, um... The city council established a work plan for the city manager to, um, move forward on identified projects, this is one of the projects, was, uh, potentially, uh, reestablishing a chamber of commerce. Uh, during that time, uh, staff has met with you, uh, several times to discuss, uh, different options, if, um, how, you know, how the process was going along. Uh, some of the options that were, um, established for council to consider was either starting a chamber of commerce from scratch, uh, joining in another established chamber of commerce... another established chamber of commerce, or forming a pilot chamber with Tarrant County College Northwest. Really, the fourth option is to do absolutely nothing, it's not listed on there. First, I want to back up, I know there was some question about, well, I'll take the blame, and you can throw the rocks at me, the, whenever the items were placed on the, for the agenda, the PowerPoint presentation that I presented to y'all a few months ago, as well as the results from the chamber, you know, the citizens, when I put that on there, apparently the public button was not clicked, so it was put on there, and I guess you just didn't get to see that, and so I apologize that you didn't get to see that information, but it was put on there, and I'll take the blame, so throw the rocks at me. Yet the four options were starting another chamber of commerce from scratch, joining another one, forming a pilot one with the Tarrant County College, or doing absolutely nothing, being it the way we are. We did, staff presented pros and cons for each, at least three of them, chamber gave staff direction to do a survey, we did a survey, we asked about four or five questions, and got responses back. Unfortunately, well, we can't force people to fill out a form and do a survey, but we did get 13 responses back in about a month's time, and the results of those, of the surveys, roughly 50/50, they either wanted to do it, or they didn't want to do anything at all. So, all I've done, and all I'll continue to do, is to provide you with information that you've asked for, that's what I've done, and that's what I'm doing tonight. The best, the business community would get the best bang for the buck, so to speak, would be to join an existing chamber, to, they, they can provide so much more than what we could offer from the scrap, from building something from scratch. Forming one with the, as I said in the document, was forming one with Tarrant County College is certainly an option, there's just, as, if you're wanting to do something right now, I don't have enough answers for you for joining with the college. There's not, there's a lot of questions, we don't have the answers for them on it yet, on it at this point. But the best value for businesses would be to join an existing chamber of commerce. Y'all had an opportunity to meet the president, CEO, and he just happened to be one of our speakers, had absolutely nothing to do with this, we were looking for a good speaker, and I've heard him speak before on that, and I thought it'd be good for our business community, and it was. So, as I've said before, and said in this document, chamber of commerce is not a municipal operation, they're formed by business community. If the financial decisions or financial options on this, or forming a new chamber would be anywhere from $250,000 to $500,000. We join with an existing chamber, which the one that I would recommend would be Northeast Tarrant Chamber, they're incredibly qualified for this, it's not just any old chamber, they're really good. And to be a partner city where we would be an equal member with the other four cities, which is North Riston Hills, Richland Hills, Watauga, and Holtham City would be equal, is just under $3,500. The cost amount to form one with the college, Tarrant County College, is unknown at this time.
So, like you said, this is a, you know, this is, this is, if we invest money, time into this to kick it off, it's, we're expecting it then to take off, and it be a positive contributor to our businesses. And we've reached out multiple times to our businesses, and the only data I got is, after a month worth of asking them, we had 13 reply back, and, you know, seven to eight of those said, no, we don't want it. So, I can't even get past that to even get to the, I have no problem, I think if we did go, I'll say right now, I think your all's recommendation is, is probably the way to go, but I haven't seen anything yet to even make me want to spend $5 and waste any more of your time evaluating this, as to how it would help our businesses, they don't seem to want it. Am I missing something? I mean, Counselor, help me out here.
I, I agree with Nick, I did, I did not see a strong enough support in favor of joining even an existing chamber, although I think it would be a good idea. Again, if we're not involved, it seems kind of funny to me that we're paying $3,500, in that ballpark anyway, to kick this thing off. The breakfast meetings that you have, I've been out of town every time you've had those, unfortunately, I've been wanting to attend, how well attended are those?
Attendance has been, and that's something that's, you know, when the city took that over, or started doing that, it was to take the place of a chamber that we didn't have anymore. Different chambers have, well, Northeast Tarrant Chamber, for example, they do, they have, they have their normal stereotypical chamber luncheon, just like all the other ones do, lunch, at lunchtime. A lot of different chambers will have breakfast meetings. At the time, when the previous Saginaw Area Chamber of Commerce was in place, they had a lot of issues going on, and attendance at their luncheons were mostly city staff, they actually looked at possibly going to breakfast, just to try it out, to see if that would get more people. The last two meetings, which we've had two very close together, one at the end of September, one in last week, we're getting 30 people, and I don't know that it's necessarily the speaker, I don't think it is. I'm beginning to think it may just be the time of day, it may be harder for people to get there at 8 o'clock, and to attend a meeting, and maybe if we, if we move that forum to a lunchtime, I think we would get more people, because the judge was outstanding, and Jack Bradshaw was outstanding too. Really think it has something to do with the time of day. When it was started, it was started as a breakfast, and I've continued it as a breakfast, but I really think we might be able to get more at a luncheon.
I guess my concern is, one, you've already got a good, seems to have a good following, based on what I've heard, which is incredible, of course, everything you do is incredible. I'm wondering if maybe the concern is that people think they're going to have to go to the northeast side of the county to where, to attend these things, and I know we had talked about having the northeast having a satellite facility here, have we reached out to Tarrant County College to see if they would be willing to host that area for us, since they want to be involved anyway? It sounds like we could kick two options and join them together.
A couple of things, and if my memory will serve me well tonight. Thank you for the compliments. We're trying to pick up where chamber left off, and trying to grow that. Having a chamber of commerce can do what I can't do. I wear a lot, lot of hats, even if I was just economic development director, that's it, I'd still, I couldn't do what a chamber of commerce does, I'd try and pick up in the place of us not having one, and I do what I can to try and do that. Yes, their intention was to, is to put a Saginaw office in Saginaw, Texas, and they will staff it, not us staff it, they will staff it, and that will serve this area, and their intention is also, because they have, the president of the Northeast Tarrant, well, the chairperson, I guess the elected official type, not the staff, but the elected official person, the chairperson, is actually the Tarrant County College Northeast president. They have an exceptional relationship with the college, and their intention is to, I don't want to use the word "take over," because there's nothing to take over, there's no chamber here, and there's no chamber in Lake Worth anymore. Their intention is to have the Northeast Tarrant Chamber morph into a North Tarrant Chamber, where it would serve where they are now, serve Saginaw, and then serve Lake Worth, but the Saginaw office would serve Saginaw and Lake Worth, we would be at the same level balance as, as the other.
I have a question. I have a question. Okay, so if we did join in the Northeast Chamber, would they reiterate with our businesses and try to get it kick-started again, so that, so they don't have a bad taste in their mouth? Because a lot of people got upset with our chamber, and I, and I don't, I don't know all the ands and ifs and buts, but if they went to the businesses here in town, do you feel like that it would help our businesses and the community too?
I think so. You know, again, it's the chamber responsibility to recruit, to get businesses to be a part of their chamber.
Yes.
Staff or the municipal government operation can encourage their businesses, you really need to take a look at this, and consider this for your business, these are some ways, here, 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 how they can help you, help your business grow. I can encourage that, I just can't make them do it, and it's, it's their, the chamber's responsibility to do their actual recruiting.
So if we joined that, that's, that's what they would do, right?
Right.
Okay.
So can we, so can we ask them, I mean, before we decide, can we ask them to come here and lay their plan out? What are they going to do? How are they going to get to, you know, give me your playbook?
If I heard correctly, I have one ear that works and one that doesn't, so.
That's why I'm trying to aim it at you.
The playbook for.
How they're going to kick off the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce, or the Northeast Chamber of Commerce here in Saginaw? What are they going to do?
Could you ask that?
I'll try to, I'll, I'll get an answer for you. The best way I could answer it off the cuff would be that if this is something that the city wanted to do, to be an equal member as North Riston Hills and the other cities, they would immediately start coming out and contacting our business. They do have some, there are some of our businesses right now that are members of their chamber, right now.
How many?
Couldn't give you off the top of my head, because I don't have access to all the Northeast Tarrant Chamber.
See, that's the stuff, I mean, if they're seriously wanting, and it seems like, I'm just trying to make sure that if we invest time and money, and, you know.
We lost, when there was a chamber here, most of our businesses left and went to the Lake Worth Chamber, or they went Northwest Metropore, or they went to Northeast Tarrant.
And we were supporting the chamber for, every year, we were given, what, $5,000 or more every year?
I think it was five, about $5,000, which was, at the time, was the Hotel Motel.
Yeah, Hotel Motel.
So I don't know.
I view the $3,000 as cheap.
I know.
As a very cheap investment, and we try it for a year.
We could try it for a year.
We try it for a year, see how it goes, talk to our business, see if they like it.
And you know, a lot of our businesses.
I think this is a great solution, because we don't have to make a huge commitment, financially or long-term.
We don't have to ask.
But we're making, I would, I'm sorry, but as a, to me, as a business person, if I'm going to invest a dollar, I want to know exactly, I mean, at least, if they're willing to do that, they should be able to say, here's our 30-day plan, or 40-day plan, here's how we plan on trying to get, to get into Saginaw, and how to get to businesses, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to do this.
I'm not talking, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to say anything out, but this chamber of commerce has been together for how long?
About 60, 70, 70 years, I think.
And so they have more, I feel like they have more, they know what how to do it the right way, you know what I'm saying? And like, like the mayor said, I think the, try it for a year, and if, if it doesn't pan out for our businesses, you know.
Depending on how you want to look at what I'm about to say, is, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, I've been in municipal government for 30 years, and I've been involved with a lot of different chambers, and I know some of the courts and the good things about a lot of the chambers. You know, I love, you know, Fort Worth Chamber is great, on an economic development side, I'm a, I'm a member of the Fort Worth Chamber on an economic development side, but if we join that, it'd be a disaster, because we're about that big.
Yeah.
So that, I couldn't recommend that, that's an incredible chamber, but I couldn't recommend that. I won't mention any of the other ones, but there's some other ones, there's no way I would, I would recommend for our business community to be a member of that. Northeast, I would.
I think, the problem is that we're not here, here trying to figure out which one to join, I know I agree with you, my thing is, is do we join any? Option four, I think you said, do nothing, so.
Absolutely nothing, and just.
Do we have to guarantee them so many years before we can back out, or is it just year by year?
Year by year, I said.
It's just year by year.
I know.
Very low risk.
It might help our businesses.
Looking at the survey results.
You know, one thing about surveys is, is kind of like when you're city staff, you never hear any of the good things, you only hear, you look at Facebook, all you hear is how evil we all are, and everything's horrible, and we're all going to die.
Well, the question I was going to.
The people that have positive things to say usually don't say anything at all.
There was some good input, I'm sorry.
As I'm saying, to end it, next year, we're here at the same time, same place, what KPIs are you going to give me to measure whether or not it was successful?
He could do that if we had it, if we had it set up, he could go, he would be able to.
Sandy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, on the survey, I saw a lot of good recommendations, what people wanted from a chamber, and again, you know, there was the negative things, that, you know, this is what I've never gotten, but one of the things that you had asked is, what would you be willing to pay? And there was a huge spread on what they'd be willing to pay to become a member of a chamber. Do we know what the Northeast Chamber charges for membership? And has that been communicated?
My memory is failing me at the moment, I can pull it up on the internet here, just a second, but it's within that range.
It is within that range.
It's not a ridiculous amount. You can charge a whole lot of money for stuff, and you're going to run people off, thinking you're going to make a lot of money by doing that, and you run them off, so they're not going to do that. They've been around too long, there are a lot of smaller chambers, one reason I would recommend not joining a small, say, a community-type chamber, is that they have, they have to charge more money to get people in there, because they can't make any money, they can't do it, and the bigger ones, they don't, they know, they know better.
And some of the events that Community Link handles now, that the chamber used to handle, would we take those back?
I know one of them, the conversation I had, that they said they'd be glad to give it back.
Okay.
So you, as director of our economic development, do you recommend that we actually, at least for one year or two years, enter into this and see how it goes with what you've learned?
My professional opinion would be yes, just because, and it's not, I don't get anything out of this, it's specifically for what is, what is, how our businesses benefit the most? And if we, if we try and form our own, it's not, they're not going to benefit, because we'll get the same thing we had before with Tarrant County College, I don't know the answer, I don't have that answer. If we live it the same way, I can only do so much, because I'm, number one, I'm a one-man show in economic development, and I try and do as much as I can to try and make up, pick up the slack from what we don't, from not having a chamber, but they can do, and I'm still going to do that, but they can do so much more that I can't do.
And again.
If I had a staff of 10 or 12?
Yeah, you bet.
But I don't.
Based on the attendance for your breakfasts, if you're looking at 30 people showing up, I think, you know, there are businesses here that are interested, and we would serve more than just Saginaw, is that correct?
For the business one?
Or they, if Northeast put a satellite office in Saginaw, that would serve more than Saginaw, that would cover Lake Worth and.
That's correct. Because technically, while it was, it was, it was always called the Saginaw Chamber of Commerce, it was the Saginaw area, and it served Fort Worth area, and Blue Mound, and Sanson Park, and even some from Lake Worth.
And that's why I was wondering, you know, rather than putting a satellite here in Saginaw itself, you know, since Tarrant County College Northwest wanted to be participating in this, if it wouldn't be better to host something at the campus?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because you refreshed my memory, and one of the things that they said that they wanted to do is, if Saginaw decided to do this, is they wanted to meet with Tarrant County College Northwest, and then start having some meetings there. There's already a, what they call, it's kind of a leads group, some places call it a leads group, where you can get, businesses get together, and I don't know what they talk about, I haven't been to one in 15 years, but, but there's already one in Saginaw right now, there's just no chamber that is associated with it other than Northeast Tarrant, but they want to get with it, because they have such a good relationship with the Northeast campus, they want to establish that with the Northwest campus and do the same thing.
Well, and the campus has all the meeting rooms and everything available, it just makes sense to partner with them.
That's kind of what they're building right now. That's kind of, what they're building right now is going to be a.
It was good before. I can't imagine what it looks like now.
Beautiful.
I, I got one other clarification on this. Now, you said there was thirty-five people. I know the one that I attended, thirty-five people at, at your meeting. It seemed like the majority of those people were not Saginaw businesses that were at that meeting.
Well, I don't take, I don't take ID cards for people, and if, if people want to come to our, but.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot, Fort Worth, there's, there's some from there. And yeah, there, there were some that are not in ID, you know, or ID as a Saginaw business. That's, that's correct.
Sure.
We're not, we're not, I don't know what the word is, but prohibiting people if you don't live in.
No, you don't want to. I just didn't want them to think that we, there was thirty-five Saginaw businesses at that.
No, there's thirty-five people.
A lot less.
Well, there were, some of those folks were city staff as well.
Yeah.
Or councilmen.
Yeah. Which we appreciate your support.
Mary, please.
You know, northeast Terrence Chamber of Commerce, they have so much experience. And if they had an office here, which they would have, you know, I think they would immediately start recruiting businesses and let them know, you know, what, what they can offer. And I, I think they would have the time and the staff to, to really get that going, and the experience, and the wherewithal and the know-how. So I, I think it would be a great idea to join, join that Chamber of Commerce.
Well, and, and the, the fact that it's only thirty-four hundred dollars, and for that we would get a satellite office in Saginaw, that's a huge selling point for me. Because they are willing to come to Saginaw and put up, put down roots, put down a brick and mortar of some sort in Saginaw, I think that's great. That would help recruit folks. We do it for a year, and we see. We talk to businesses, we see what they're, how many businesses have signed up. Let's see where they are. We're not making a long commitment. I think that's the great thing about it.
Give it a shot, and after a year, if it, if it's not working out, then it's less than what you paid the previous Chamber of Commerce.
It is.
Nick, what sort of information, feedback would you like after a year? Number of businesses in the Saginaw, Saginaw, number of Saginaw area businesses that are participating? What other kind of information would you like to see at the end of the year?
Saginaw area is, is, that includes a lot of Fort Worth all the way up to Alliance, because they have some, some businesses from Alliance area that are a member of their chamber. They have businesses from Hurst and Bedford, and, and even some from Ulyss, and of course, Halton, and then Fort Worth, and it's a big, they're a big chamber. It's just four, four partner cities right now. We would be the fifth. Fort Worth isn't even a partner city.
He wants to measure the success, and I'm just kind of curious what points he would like to see reported back to us at the end of the year.
I'd like to see how many, the number one thing is, how many businesses do, do we have that joined it in one year?
Like, how, how many businesses that are as of right, hypothetically?
It's right here in the Saginaw.
You approved it right now, and then as of right now, and in one year from now, how many? Yeah. That's, that's easy to do.
Attendance at events, you know, Saginaw attendance at events.
Right.
If they, if they have events in Saginaw, I would hope they would, or at least close, what kind of attendance does those have?
And I think that would be a huge draw, is to have things here in Saginaw, so they don't have to go over to the northeast. Because, you know, once you get to the east side of thirty-five W, traffic's awful.
I know.
Yeah.
I've been to, I've been to a couple of their luncheons, and of course, they get, you know, amazing speakers. I don't think they're as good as my forum speakers that I had. Kind of biased. No, they have great speakers, and they have probably three hundred people, two, three hundred people attend their, their luncheon.
I, I did speak to the mayor of Northridge and Hills about this. I know him pretty well. He's, he's a fan, and he's a small business owner, pretty big business owner, actually. So he's a fan. He, he said, yeah, try it for a year. Try it and see. It's a great opportunity. So he's, the Halton City Mayor's very supportive as well. I didn't talk to the other mayors, but, and that's anecdotal, but that's positive feedback.
What, what I would like to do, if, whether you decide to do this or not tonight, anytime, I'm going to ask their president, CEO, and again, this is whether you decide to do it or not, to send me dates on when they have their chamber luncheons, so you can attend. Just check it out. See what it's like.
And I'm kind of like Nick, I'd kind of like to see what their recruiting package is like.
Hmm.
If, if I understood you correctly.
Well, there's a lot of new businesses coming into town, and this gives them a platform to network, and, you know, come back to the city with some recommendations of things that we can do to help these businesses go on. And I think, you know, with what we have coming up in the next year or two, I think this would be a real good thing for us to have.
Now, I'll remind you, I mentioned this, I don't know how many months ago, but I didn't contact them. They contacted me. I happened to be driving with my daughter somewhere in the mountains of Colorado, up, driving her to her, her college, and I got a call from one of their ambassadors saying, hey, what do you think? And I'm like, well, let me stop driving, and I'll call you later tonight. But they contacted us.
Yeah, Paul, you mentioned the new businesses. A lot of those new businesses are going to expect that we have a chamber.
Yeah, I know.
Soon that we have a chamber.
I know. When I was in college, I had to do a marketing study, and I went to the chamber to get the data that I needed in order to do it.
It could be a good thing.
Yeah.
Done correctly.
Are any other questions? I think we've discussed this pretty, pretty well. How will entertain a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we go ahead and try it for a year and see what happens.
Try specifically what?
Join the, reestablish the Chamber of Commerce and join the four, northeast Terrence Chamber.
Have a say. Mayor say. Cast your votes, please.
Thanks for your hard work, Keith.
Look forward to this.
All right, item number twelve. So at seven fifty-six, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation planning and zoning regarding ordinance, zoning ordinance stated Saginaw, amending section seven dash one, P D planned development district and article seven, special district, by removing minimum acres required for planned development district. And that's, you again, all right.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, once again, can I brief you quickly on this item? This is really just a amendment to the zoning ordinance. Currently, planned districts are limited to ten acres. So this would give us a little bit more flexibility in what we can and can't do with planned districts. We have some smaller tracts in the city that are actually less than ten acres, and by amending this, we can kind of maybe focus on those. That's kind of the case right now with the fire station. I think there's a restaurant slash development coming in there called Twisted Roots, along with some other stuff. If you adopt this, then you can, we'll, we'll be able to actually implement a planned district and, and kind of have a little more leeway and, and say what we can and can't do in that, in that development.
Any questions? Counsel, questions on this item?
How many parcels are we looking at?
Looking.
That are less than ten acres? I think we had requested some information on that in the past.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure on the.
I'll answer that. The, the intent behind this zoning ordinance change, talked about this with Bryn, is to allow for redevelopment, really. So every parcel on Saginaw Boulevard, maybe with the exception of the vacant parcel to the north, is under ten acres. So if you think of a development that could come in, a planned development is a specific zoning for a specific site plan. It's not broad, like, say, a commer, community commercial, which could be many, many things. A P D planned development is unique to a site plan. So in terms of redevelopment and, and future changes along the Boulevard, almost every parcel along the Boulevard would be, if an applicant requested, would meet the criteria.
Again, any idea how many parcels we're looking at?
That are non-residential, under ten acres, you tell me how many parcels you think are on Saginaw Boulevard and Blue Mound? Those are our main commercial thoroughfares.
So you don't have an answer for that?
I, I don't, off the top of my head.
That would have been acceptable.
A couple hundred, maybe, if I had to guess. Does that sound reasonable?
What, what do we gain by just doing an overall P D change to this?
I may defer to the city attorney.
So currently, you have to maintain a, a minimum of ten acres in order to apply for planned development zoning. Planned development zoning is a very valuable tool that allows council to micromanage the development and ensure that you receive precisely not only the land use, but the layout of the land use for these parcels. And so typically, you don't see a minimum acreage requirement in order to submit for planned development zoning, and that's because zoning is discretionary. So if you're not satisfied that the application merits approval, you can always deny it. So the limitation on seeking application is really a limitation on, on the city rather than the applicant itself. So the, the prime example and the motivation for this is the local favorite project. My recommendation, because we weren't able to negotiate any sort of deed restrictions because it would affect financing for the project, was to ensure that we still control what uses are allowed on the property, even if we have no contractual limitation on what can occur on the property. So it's my recommendation that you expand your authority to review planned development application zoning in the future for all manner of parcel sizes. And of course, if you don't agree that planned development is appropriate, or the zoning change is appropriate on a case-by-case basis, you can always deny it.
Good. That's nice. And Bryn, thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public in the audience is allowed to speak on this right now. You don't fill out a card, just approach, and, all right, if not, then eight oh one, take us out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll try this.
Go for it.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, which will remove the minimum acreage requirement for a planned development district.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Paul? Okay. Please cast your votes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, item number thirteen, again at eight oh two. We're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, amending article two, planning and zoning commission of appendix A zoning of the Saginaw City Code, which establishes planning and zoning commission and provides purposes organization and membership of the commission. And this is council members Lawson and Big Horse who is going to take the lead on it.
I, I will.
All right.
So this is part of that cleanup we were doing, and trying to get as much as possible all the committees in line and, and matching. And so this is the final of them here. And I want to, before I get started here on all this, Bryn, I really appreciate you reviewing everything, replying back, and everyone else that also gave us comments. It ended up being a lot bigger lift than we had originally thought that we would want to bite off. But anyways, we'll start off with this one. The Planning and Zoning Commission, the modifications include the end of term change to June thirtieth to coincide with other committee appointments, adding a training requirement, adding members must be registered voters of the city of Saginaw, and shall have resided in the city of Saginaw at least six months prior to service. Require the election of a chair and vice chair. They have to give a presentation of recommendations to the city council, a presentation of an annual report to city, at a city council meeting. They need to post the agenda, meeting minutes, budget, and attendance as applicable on the committee page of the city of Saginaw website. And the city shall hold meetings every quarter and shall have a meeting at least once a year. Any, any further questions on that? It's pretty straightforward.
What was the presentation one?
Huh?
You said presentation to the council. What does that entail?
Yeah, well, there's two there. One is if they come up with a recommendation or something, they want, they, they come to the city council and present it.
Like, any item that we vote on would have some.
Yeah, they, yeah, one of them would need that.
That gives us the opportunity to ask the committee's questions.
Do we think of an issue getting those folks available to come, and what if they're not available?
Well, the chairman could appoint somebody to come and.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't say the chairman asked to, it just says somebody on the.
What if nobody shows from P and Z? Can we still do business? That's my question.
Um, Bryn, can we still do business?
So yes, yes. It, it's a directive, but it won't affect the outcome of the ultimate vote, because so long as the council complies with state law and receives a recommendation report from planning and zoning, that's sufficient.
I just don't want us to be, have to be held up if somebody's out of town or can't, can't make it. Okay.
And then the second presentation was, I'm sorry, was once a year, the, just to give a, a kind of a state of the committee.
And one of the things, and maybe it just needs clarification from my perspective, we said they need to meet four times a year, but they need to meet once a year. So we need to schedule four meetings, but they need to meet.
That's right. Yeah, they've scheduled for, but they, they need to meet at least once a year, unless there's an overlying state ordinance that says otherwise.
Right. Board of Adjustments is one, that they don't have to meet all the time.
That, that's correct. That's correct.
Mayor, you have a question?
There are two items in the new suggested ordinance that are in conflict.
Two items in the suggested ordinance that are actually in conflict with the city charter. When we had the amendment, when we, when we updated the city charter in two thousand nineteen, we actually changed the requirement that they had to have lived in Saginaw for a year. That's in our city charter. And so we have to follow the city charter.
That, that's correct. And I, I wanted to let, allow council member Copeland to provide that. So if you have any rocks remaining after throwing them at Keith, I'll, I'll welcome some in my direction. So co-counsel here met with me prior to the council meeting and astutely pointed out that what's unique in Saginaw is you have a couple of peculiar provisions in your city charter. So I apologize, I, I reviewed it for purposes of compliance with state law, because that's typically for, for each of these, the, the metric by which everything is governed. So we will have to amend two aspects of this particular ordinance and prepare to do that. So it, rather than six months, the charter does require a year residency. But I think that only bolsters the, the sentiment that was the impetus for the residency requirement anyway. And then somewhat unusually, so under, under state law, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission serve at the will of the council, so they can be removed at any time. Only the Board of Adjustment members may be removed, are only permitted to be removed for cause. But as I said, rather peculiar, peculiarly, your city charter requires that Planning and Zoning Commission members also only be removed after a hearing and a written charge is filed. And so I'll need to tweak that particular element, but all other amendments are appropriate as presented by the committee.
All right, other questions, counsel? And this is a public hearing, so the, the public is encouraged, allowed to speak on this item. If not, at eight oh eight, take us out of a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the reaction on ordinance number twenty dash, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one with the one-year change and that Bryn cited.
And the removal for cause.
And the removal, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Cindy will second. Please cast your votes.
All right, thank you. Moving forward to item number fourteen, consideration action regarding ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, amending ordinance article three, board of adjustments, appendix A, zoning of Saginaw City Code, establishing a board of adjustments, purposes organization, membership of a board, and that's council members Lawson and Big Horse.
Nick, you again. Yep. So this is for the Board of Adjustments. The modifications include end of term change to June thirtieth to coincide with committee appointments, and then add training requirement. Add members must be registered voters of the city of Saginaw, and shall have resided in the city of Saginaw at least one year prior to service. Required the election of a chair and a vice chair, a presentation of recommendations to city council, and then a presentation of an annual report at a city council meeting. Post agenda minutes, budget, and attendance as applicable on the committee page of the city of Saginaw website. And the committee shall hold meetings every quarter and shall meet at least. And the committee shall hold meetings every quarter and shall meet at least once a year.
Council questions? Questions, comments? Straightforward?
Again, I think this is the great area because the Board of Adjustments doesn't have to meet.
Yeah, it's the same thing as, exactly. They don't, they need to have, they only have to meet once a year. It's what, the way this is worded.
But they don't even have to meet that often, do they, by state law?
They're not required to meet. They're required by the judicial board. So typically, the way it works is unless they have a case to hear before them, they really otherwise wouldn't need to meet. But of course, you could require them to meet, but they're not a policymaking board. So they don't render recommendations to council.
Maybe should be needed, needed.
Meet as needed.
Yeah, meet as needed.
Okay.
Sure, we can, we can make it. Take a second. We'll tweak that. Any other questions? Again, this is a public hearing, so the public is invited to speak. Don't all rush the stage at once. All right, 8:11, I'll take us out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for 14.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2022-22, the Board of Adjustment to the one-year, change to one year and as needed for the meetings as presented.
Charlie, second. Please cast your votes.
Sorry, just for clarification, you said the change to one year?
Well, you said that they had to live here one year.
That's only for the...
Yeah, they said that the city charter said that.
It's just for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Just for Planning and Zoning. That's right. And that's ironically...
Take out the one year, yeah.
Correct. Yes, that's the only board that the charter speaks to.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I apologize. We both wrote it down one year.
All right, we're good. Okay. Moving forward, item number 15, Settle an action regarding ordinance 2022-23, amending Article II Advisory and Recreation and Parks Board, Chapter 58 Parks and Recreation, Saginaw Code, establishes advisory direction in Parks Board and provides for the organization and membership of the Board. Council member Lawson?
Yeah, the modifications include end of term change to June 30 to coincide with other committee appointments, add a training requirement, add members must be registered voters of the city of Saginaw and shall have resided in the city of Saginaw at least one year prior to, at least six months prior to service. You guys got me on that one-year thing.
You had me confused.
Required the election of a chair and vice chair, treasurer, and secretary, presentation of recommendations to city council, presentation of an annual report at a city council meeting, post-agenda minutes, budget, attendance as applicable on the committee page of the city of Saginaw website. And the committee shall meet, shall hold meetings every quarter and shall meet at least once a year.
This also changes the terms that are no longer aligned with the mayor's election.
Yeah, that's what this, this did when it says...
Was that also, was that on your list? I don't recall it.
Yeah, it's the... This is for the Parks and Rec...
Oh, Parks and, sorry.
Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, so it, that doesn't apply. Yeah.
Questions, council? Any issues? Now, does this say we can kick somebody off the call on this one? Just curious.
Everybody but the chairman.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve 2022-23 as he presented on the advisory Recreation and Parks Board.
Cindy, second. Please cast your votes.
Item number 16, Settle an action regarding ordinance 2022-24, amending Section 2 that's 163 of the Saginaw City Code that establishes a capital improvements advisory committee and provides for the purposes, organization, and membership of the committee.
Council member Lawson?
Yeah. Modifications include end of term change to June 30 to coincide with other committee appointments. Add that the CIAC will follow meeting requirements of the P and Z per city code, Appendix A, Article II. And that's it.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2022-24 as he presented.
Second? Nick, second. Please cast your votes. Thank you, folks. Item number 17, Settle an action regarding ordinance 2022-25, amending Article II Library Board in Chapter 46 of the Library of the Saginaw City Code that establishes a Library Board and provides for the purposes, organization, and membership of the Board. Council member Lawson?
Yeah, the modification, this one's longer. So the modifications, length of term change from three years to two years to be consistent with all other boards, end of term change from two June 30 to coincide with other committee appointments, addition of two alternates to the Board, add a training requirement, add members must be registered voters of the city of Saginaw and shall reside in the city of Saginaw at least six months prior to service, require the election of a chair and vice chair, treasurer, and secretary, presentation of recommendations to a city council, presentation of an annual report at a city council meeting, post-agenda minutes, budget, and attendance as applicable on the committee page of the city of Saginaw website. Committee members shall hold meetings every quarter and shall meet at least once per year.
Council questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve 2022-25 as he presented.
Do I have a second? Paul? All right. Please cast your votes.
I guess I need to vote.
You probably have.
Awesome. Item number 18, Settle an action regarding ordinance 2022-26, formally establishing the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Board, providing for the appointment of members, providing due means, procedures, and authority of the Board. Council member Lawson?
Okay. The presentation considered for the adoption would be, Board members are appointed by city council. The length of term will be established to be two years to be consistent with all other boards. End of term was, end of term established to be June 30 in consistency with other committee appointments. Addition of two alternates to the Board, add a training requirement, add members must be registered voters in the city of Saginaw and shall have resided in the city of Saginaw for at least six months prior to service, require the election of a chair, vice chair, treasurer, and secretary, presentation of recommendations to the council, and presentation of an annual report at a city council meeting. Post-agenda minutes, budget, attendance as applicable on the committee page of the city of Saginaw website. And the committee shall hold meetings every quarter and shall meet at least once a year.
Council questions?
And one other comment that I'd like to make is we actually established a number of places which we haven't had in the past. We have seven places now and two alternates where before I just think it was whoever wanted to sign up could be a member of the committee.
Yeah. Yeah. I may have left that off in the thing. I think that's in there.
There was a lot of information on that one, so.
Yeah.
That and the library.
All right. Other questions, council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve 2022-26 as presented.
Do I have a second? Nick, second. Please cast your votes. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Big Horse. Thank you, Councilmember Lawson. Appreciate the hard work. All right, so we had our item number 19 executive session, so we will return to adjourn. So pursuant to Text Government Code 551.071 and 551.072, we are adjourned at, to executive session 819.
And Mayor, also 087.
Oh, I missed that one because we've got three.
Pursuant to 551, that's 087 as well.
Hope it's warmer back there.
Huh?
I hope it's warmer back there.
I didn't even take my jacket off.
I'd really make a motion to give him the vice of store manager.
Well, thank everybody for... He had to be in front of the... For, for, for... Yeah. Was a very, the, the fact that... You know, I'm in more...
I like it, I like it all.
Yeah. The worst thing that happened was the ladies... So, with the law, and I'm like, I'm sure it was still, you know, it was a mess in the house.
Really?
Yeah, oh, I didn't think, I, I, part of that, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, okay, although I did check my son's hair, he said, walking, you know, she, right. I can't believe I'm here, and I'm walking, and... I stand, I, I'll see you, so.
Okay.
Thank you, y'all.
Thanks.
I just turned those lights too off.
Okay, that's a chance, that's me, I walked, I just wanted to make sure, I was off.
Yeah, I, last time I was calling, you're talking, it's like, yeah, we should lose her. I wish I could hear myself. I'll get it off. I'm a member of the National Convention, it's not a...
I have to approve it. Very first council, I had, I was saying, I was like, gee. I was like, what? Because, I mean, I don't see, I'm not just seeing, I mean, it was, there was discussion. Mayor, I'm really, I'm all decided before you know it.
Yeah, that, that discussion was going on. What time is it at here? We have a, we have a meeting. Oh, we're just, we're here, we're just...
Um, it's somehow, it has to be kind of a culture. Is that everything is, I would, I would, that's unfortunate because that's not...
I'll be here for you, I'm in session.
I'm...